The city council business meeting of June 24, 2025. I'm going through, I will cheat sheet here. Won't you all please join me in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Can I start with the roll call, please? Here.
Here.
Daniel, here. Davis, yes.
Ronnie?
Yes.
Ruth?
Yes.
Stephen?
Here.
All right. I will entertain a motion to adopt the agenda. I will call out that there are two elements on the agenda that have the little squiggly mark that says, hey, this is the first time it came up. I think we're good, but I just wanted to call that to council's attention before we start.
I move to approve the agenda as written.
Have a motion from council member Conley, a second from council member Daniels. Any discussion? Hearing none, can I get a quick roll call vote and make it official?
Conley?
Yes.
Daniel?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Ronnie?
Yes.
Ruth?
Yes.
Stephen?
Yes.
Six oh, the motion passes. I'll entertain a motion to adopt the minutes of June 10.
I move to adopt the minutes of June 10, 2025.
I'll second.
Motion from council member Ronnie, second from council member Conley. Discussion at the table. Hearing none, can I get a roll call vote, please?
Conley?
Yes.
Daniels?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Ronnie?
Yes.
Ruth?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Six oh, motion passes. I will entertain a motion on warrants payable.
I move to approve warrants payable.
I'll second.
Motion from council member Conley, second from council member Toopin. Discussion at the table, please.
I did not make any notes of, there was large expenditures, and I don't have them off the top of my head.
I do. The bank stabilization with $255,000. Yep. So that was a little pricey. The storm water through Great West, that was a $70,549. Seventy thousand, yeah. And we did have another $12,000 on our rental for just electric. And I would like to thank the city for using local electricians and wherever they can on that renovation project.
Any other questions or comments at the table?
The total amount was $371,758.47.
That's a little one.
Ooh, that's all.
It's a small stack today.
All right, any other comments at the table? Can I get a roll call vote, please?
Conley?
Yes.
Daniel?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Ronnie?
Yes.
Ruth?
Yes.
Stephen?
Yes.
Six zero, motion passes. For mayor's comments, and I will apologize in advance, I kind of, during the two weeks I collect all the information, I did not get a chance to compact them down. So I will, I will try to do my best and hopefully I won't miss anything. First off, runoff status. Snowtail says our snowpack up in the mountains is less than 10%. So I think we are officially, to the point, we have taken down the emergency banner when you hit our front page. However, if you're still interested, if you go into All News, you can still go in and see, you can still go in and see all of the links that we have to monitor that. For those of you who may have seen in the paper, Rocky Fork demolition is out for bid this last week. And you noticed that, I'm sure, down below the fold as well. We'll wait and talk about that. Basically, we are anticipating that on our next meeting, that Tuesday morning, we will be opening the bid in an effort to move this forward and not have any delays. I've gone ahead and put that on the agenda, that we can award the bid that night. We'll just get all that information to council that night. Otherwise, it puts another couple of weeks of delay in that process. I will add on to that, that we are moving on to the what next date. So I met with DES today, and they are sending over a guiding document that we can look at. For instance, they said there are some versions of picnic tables that are there that you can, even a possibility you can put in a gazebo if it has water flow underneath it. So there's a lot of additional information that they'll be sending over, and I hope we'll have that to discuss in future conversations. Street signs on Broadway, by end of the month, Mike, what are we looking at? So, within 30 days, let's say that, but like the end of July, we are getting those street signs updated on Broadway so that they'll have the north and south part of that. It depends on the order coming back, but that's a project that's in, and then we'll be able to close that out of. It's been kind of tagging along for several years, actually. And this happened when Glory was on council, when we first brought that forward. So we'll get a look to wrap that up. That's significantly less than what was set aside for that. We have ordered two additional feedback signs for the south and north end of town. So on the south end of town, we'll be going at that 35, just as you first turn the corner, kind of by Chateau coming in. And then there'll be a 45 on the north end of town, just before the hospital. So it's actually just outside of city limits, but it turned out that was not a problem, and everybody was on board with that.
So instead of moving north, we're getting two on the north side.
Yeah, so the original, the original project, we had allocated $30,000, and it came in for less than we wanted. And so we've got one to slow it down, hey, you're getting civilization slowed down, and then a 25 on both ends to remind them that it's there.
Thank you.
Okay? There, just a heads up, it'll be on the agenda next time. There's an airport grant that we got from the state that we failed to get on the agenda this time. So I will have that for action next time. It's basically, because we are a sponsor of the airport, we just have to sign, they're giving us $300,000 to $400,000 for paving up there, and we just have to sign off on it. There was also some signing off on closing out the 2025 grant with just some cameras, but I had those reviewed by the city attorney, and that's just, that's covered under charter on just executing and closing out stuff that's there. So I'll be signing that one, and that doesn't come to council. For public awareness, tonight, we have on the agenda the growth policy, which is on the webpage. The planning board currently has their public hearing on the downtown master plan, which is kind of like click in to zoom in information. That is scheduled for July 9. That notice has been run. That's the second Wednesday at 5:30 PM. That is available online for anybody who's interested in looking at that. And one of the things we request is that if people have comments, the sooner you can make that, the better we are able to utilize those volunteers' time to get those changes done and implemented there. Also, by way of information, we have an open position for a utility clerk that is posted online. We did, we have started the discussions on the Republic trash contract. Mike was able to meet with them last week, and we will, we are anticipating that we will get, the first, kind of go back and forth. We anticipate a couple of those, and then we'll be bringing that to council for suggestions and input before we adopt that. The pool, they've been able to make, do some additional hiring at the pool. Stay tuned, I anticipate that you will see that the pool is open on Mondays, or opening up on Monday soon. My understanding is that they're not sure they're going to have lat swim on Monday mornings yet. They'll continue on the other mornings, but Monday during the day, it looks like it'll be open as well. So just keep tuned there, we've got some additional folks that'll be coming. I think that's what I have in my notes. Was there anything else that council had questions on or wanted to report on? I have one more thing. Thank you. How did I skip over it? I would like to, and this can be done in mayor's comments, if I'd thought about it soon enough, I would have put it as a standalone item on the agenda. But I'm looking for, when Doug was here, he was the council appointee slash representative on the Red Lodge Rural Fire Oversight Committee. I would like to propose and get a motion to accept the mayor's appointment to, I would like to appoint Patty Davis to fill the position formerly held by Doug Miller. I would entertain a motion to make that official.
I would move to make that official.
I'll second.
All right, I have a motion from council member Conley, a second from council member Daniels to confirm the mayor's appointment of Patty Davis to the Red Lodge Rural Fire Oversight Committee. That may be overkill, it may not be required, but we've covered the bases if we do that. Any discussion at the table? Hearing none, can I get a vote on that?
Conley?
Yes.
Daniel?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Ronnie?
Yes.
Ruth?
Yes.
Stephen?
Yes.
She said yes.
Thank you.
I know, thank you.
Yeah, it feels weird, the first time you're voting for yourself, I understand that. All right, hearing no other requests on the table, that concludes what I have for mayor's comments. Thank you. With that, what I'd like to do is open the meeting up for public comment. I'm going to stall for just a moment while I grab my timer. The public comment is, this is one of the opportunities you have to address the council. So we have an open block at the beginning of the council meeting. There will, similarly, there will be a time period for public comment at the end of the council meeting. And in addition to that, every item that's listed as an action item on the agenda, we will have public comment on before we take action on. During all that public comment, you're limited to three minutes' time. If you would start by stating your name for the record, and if you would address your comments to me, that just helps us keep the civility, everybody else will eavesdrop and listen in. With that, I'll go ahead and open the public comment. And as always, I start in the room first. If there's anybody who's interested in speaking, step up to the podium, state your name, and you have the floor for three minutes.
My name is Russell Cooper, and my family's been a longtime residents of the Carbon County area since the 1900s. And my, I have an issue with the water being raised. Over the last few years, the water has gone up and up and up and up. And I figured it out, as of right now, I'm paying $0.49 a gallon for every water that comes into our house. We're not residents here right now. We live in Joliet, and their water is nowhere near the water prices of what Red Lodge is. And we're planning on moving up here, and with the way the water prices are, it's going to be tight for us to finance the water up here. In fact, in the past, we, when the water prices started going up, we had got a loan to drill a well to, so we could water our yard so it looks nice and water our plants and stuff. And, but then since then, the water just has just continued going up and up and up and up. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you. All right, any other public comment from those seated in chambers? Hearing none, we'll go to online. If you could either turn on your camera, or alternatively raise a hand, or if I see a mute come off, we'll assume there's public comment there, and I'll call on you. I'm not seeing anything, going once, going twice, and going three times, we'll go ahead and close that public comment. Again, just a reminder that there will be an opportunity for the public to comment on each of our action items as we move forward. With that, I will entertain a motion for resolution 3704.
I would move to approve, well, the resolution to adopt the 2025 Red Lodge growth policy update. I guess we'll call it an update.
I'll second.
Have a motion from council member Conley, a second from council member Davis. I have asked, I'm sorry, council member Toopin. It was so loud, I thought, yeah.
Sorry, I'm using my indoor.
There we go, all right. I've asked Al Blumer, who is our planning board president, if he would take a few moments and introduce some comments in this. Al, you have the floor, sir. You are not timed.
Okay, so I won't have to go through this whole thing there, right?
You may say whatever you would like, sir. They have not all seen that, so.
Okay, Al Blumer, I live on 302 Kainu, and I'm the chairman of the planning board. I just want to give a brief introduction to what we've been through for the last 14 months. The purpose of the growth policy or master plan is to identify plans and objectives for the community development. It's a guideline. It's something to look into the future, it's a to-do list. We tried very hard not to be too specific because it's a broader plan. The objectives and the plan should be attainable and measurable. Some of the things that we took into account were obviously housing, land use, services, natural resources, and facilities. In 1995, Red Lodge created a master plan. It was a general plan for development. The first growth policy was an update of the master plan, which was done in 2001. Since that time, the growth policy has undergone several updates, beginning in 2008, again in 2013, again in 2020, and now in 2025. Having been party to the 2013, 20, and 25 updates, I can state that this document has had the most detailed review of any of the previous documents. The planning board with the initial guidance from Great West Engineering Planning Consultants, and then subsequently from WWC planners, began the initial review in April of 2024. In May, we held an open public forum that was hosted by the Veritude Front, seeking and receiving a lot of input from the general community. The information gathered was incorporated in this document and also in the one that we'll be submitting, the downtown master plan, next month. After extensive work and review, we held another published review of the document back in April, April 9. The document was finalized and submitted to council for review and approval. The document you have before you, again, is for future planning. It has some future goals and guidelines. We lay the specificity to the zoning document. This is just hopefully a broader picture. The document you have before you is a result of the expertise of our consulting planners at WWC and a detailed review by the planning board. The format was changed extensively to allow easier reading and understanding. I hope you agree with us and unanimously approve this document and approve resolution 3704.
All right, thank you, Al. If you, if you would have a seat, what I'd like to do next is I'm going to open the public hearing, which is a statutory requirement.
Okay.
After we have the public hearing, I'll close the public hearing, we'll bring it back to the table. And we certainly have the option of calling Al back for any questions from council. And I will also call out that we have Greg from WWC, who is online and helped steward this across the finish line. But first off, what we'd like to do is go ahead and open up the public hearing. This is for comments specifically related to the growth policy and resolution 3704. So I'll go ahead and open it up and look to the room first for public comment. I am not seeing anybody leaping to the podium, so we'll go to online if there's any public comment on the growth policy. Going once, going twice, three times, we'll go ahead and check off the box. They said we have had public hearing and opportunity for public comments on the growth policy. With that, I will bring it back to the table. Again, if you would please direct your comments to me, and as needed, I have the ability to invite Al or Greg to answer any questions. I'll entertain discussion at the table.
I did receive a.
Council member Conley, go ahead.
I received an email from the Red Lodge Area Community Foundation from Angela Getchel, because in the growth policy, we quoted opportunities for housing, that the Red Lodge Area Community Foundation completed a Carbon County Housing Needs Assessment in 2022. And she says that that was actually done in 2016. That they did do a 2022 Carbon County Workforce Housing Study. So she would like to have that reflected and it's accurate.
Ken, did you have a note, if we get to the point of making motions on this, that you have that prepared to go?
Yeah.
All right, I'm looking for hands for anybody else who'd like to comment on the growth policy? Council member Ronnie?
Okay, well, I just have several things, and it could just be me not quite understanding, you know, the, how, the difference between an objective and then the action plan, because a lot of the objectives seem more like actions to me in several of the spaces. You know, like they, one of the objectives was to work with other groups to create Art Along Broadway. And to me, that would be the action for it, not necessarily the object. I guess I was just kind of confused on how that worked. Because that was under the objective to, on creating a welcoming environment for economic development downtown. But then the action had nothing, it didn't have anything on the action side that actually did that. It was more that, it was more of an action, I guess, is what, that's just my comment on that.
Okay.
And then on page 15, when it talks about the objectives of the Dark Sky Initiative and encouraging development and outdoor advertising to be designed in a manner that will protect the current mountain and the Rock Creek view sheds, I think that we've already got, I don't know that we necessarily need to create a whole new Dark Sky Initiative because we've already put all of the Dark Sky lighting guidelines into our building codes and into our zoning. And council, it was brought before council a while ago and got voted down about the outdoor advertising. And I just kind of almost feel like this is a backdoor method of trying to get that pushed back in, when council already said, no, we don't necessarily, you know, our downtown outdoor advertising, we want it to stay bright, and, you know, unfortunately, that may not go along with the Dark Skies initiative. But, so that's just my comment on that. And on page 18, I'm just curious, it says that having a plan for the disposal of deceased animals within the city, do we not have that already? Like, do we, don't we just kind of throw them away? Or am I? Oh, just on, create a plan for the disposal of deceased animals. I mean, how do we take care of that now? Do we not already have that, something? Yeah.
Can I comment on that?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's why I asked. I'm asking him directly, so.
Okay, okay.
From my understanding and from my experience, from having numerous dead animals thrown into my yard, no, no, we don't.
And I'm okay with that, I just didn't know if we did or didn't, it was just.
I'm right there on the highway.
And I, and I guess my question is, and I think, I'll have you go through, and then we can kind of come back to it. So to me, if this is saying, hey, we need to address it, if we've already got it, or if we need to refine it, to me, I don't have an objection to that. And get it, I'm not, I'm not voting on this, right? That's council voting on it. I don't, I don't see that as problematic. As compared to like the Dark Skies Initiative, I can, I can understand council saying, maybe we don't want to include that as part of our vision of the future. That's, so anyway, so notes on both of those, so let's go back to your list.
Okay. On, gosh, is this also on page 18? Yes, and it was also included later down in the document, where they described our solid waste and recycling and composting, and having a solid waste and recycling ordinance management plan. And there again, that was also voted down by council, that we did not want that. And to me, it's mainly about the recycling and the composting component of that and requiring the city to have that. Because we may not be able to afford that down the road, or we may, and I just, so that was my concern. I mean, it had already been voted down by council when that was presented before, a couple of years ago. So that, there was that. And then it was just some questions on page like 20 and 21. On, and I'm okay with leaving this part in there, creating the incentives for the energy conservation plan. But I guess, to me, it's like, where does that money come from? How do we create those incentives? But I guess that would be up to those people to try to figure that out.
Ultimately, council, probably.
And then increase the multimodal transportation within the city. It talks about addressing the congestion in the downtown area and other large events within the community. And, you know, it's like, we've been trying to do that for the last, you know, 30 years. So I just don't know if there's actually ever an answer for that. And they talk about having parking, public parking, there again, we haven't really.
Where?
Where? So, you know, it's just some of this, it's just, I get it, it's, you know, I guess if a grant came along and we could build a parking garage or something, you know, then I understand that. But it just seems like a lofty goal to me.
Okay.
Comment again.
Council member Toopin?
Just on behalf of the planning board, in those lofty goal scenarios. So one of the benefits of having these types of objectives and goals within the growth policy, as lofty as they may be, it actually does open up opportunities for grant writing and for grant opportunities.
Similar to the conversation we'll have with the capital improvements plan, like these guiding documents give us, it says, we've been thinking about this longer than just, you announced it last Tuesday, that you're trying to get away money.
Same as what we're going to be doing with the CIP. And then the only other thing, there was talk in the, later on, in the form about how the North Entrance, you know, where the URD is, that right now it's zoned industrial, light industrial, and actually working on changing that zoning to just commercial. And, I can't find it, find it there now. But I just really caution changing that zoning when we have no place else for those businesses to go. I know it's zoned light industrial, partly up at the airport, but there's no infrastructure there. And so my only concern is changing zoning on businesses, and then they have no place else to go. Those are my comments.
So I kind of captured three out of that that I want to circle back to in a moment. You mentioned Dark Skies and some stuff on recycling that you felt had already been to council, and maybe this was counter to previous guidance from council. And then the third was, was a zoning thing, which ultimately would come back to council to be adopted if zoning is there anyway. All right, so that's at the high level. Other comments from the table?
I think that.
Council member Toopin?
Really, of those comments, again, I definitely would say, I would like to reword how we have objective number five. And I'm going to try and be a little bit more specific about what we're actually looking at, so we can have that to reflect back to.
Objective number five on page.
I'm trying to get there, hold on, please. I was scrolling all the way down to urban renewal, that you're now scrolling all the way back up.
I was trying to like go through it.
Nope, I get it. So specifically, it was on the, okay, so here I am, number 15. Objective five, number 15, on page 15, under goals, objective, action plan for land use. And that was developing a Dark Skies initiative to continue to enforce the outdoor lighting and regulations. So that, I don't necessarily have, I don't think we need to develop an issue, just continuing to enforce the outdoor lighting regulations that we have is perfectly appropriate to me. So, and that's a pretty easy, just amend, in my eyes. So, especially with Greg going there, I know he's used to this.
Yes, council member Ronnie?
I would like to get rid of where it says, outdoor advertising to be designed in.
That was a backdoor.
Yeah.
Okay, so what I'm looking for right now from council is specific issues that we can, to be addressed or of concerns. And then what we'll do is we'll come back, because just to kind of sneak ahead a little bit, I see a few actions forward. My goal is not to turn this, I've been in those planning board meetings where they've spent hours and hours and hours going through this. I don't want this to be one of those meetings. There's a possibility we adopt as is. There's a possibility that there are some simple amendments to be made, which is certainly council's prerogative to do. council's prerogative to do. There is a possibility that council says, we have some amendments, what we'd like to do is bring those back in two weeks and, and work on those. Um, there's also an option, uh, that we remand this back to planning board. I, I will share, I hope that there's nothing that, that's at that level and I would, I would think that, but, but, so that's kind of as I'm collecting these points, I'm kind of thinking where, where are we on that? So, right now, going back to table, any other things that jumped out that people want to Councilmember Reed?
I don't hear anything that needs to go back, so I would move to table, resolution number 3704 for two weeks. Discuss.
And then we can bring some more formal written amendments to the table and I think that's a really appropriate way to do it opposed to.
And you mean take it back to 90 some planning committee and make those amendments?
Honestly, I think it should be the council members that have changes that they would like to see.
Okay.
And then bring that to the land use and planning committee to where we can have a more formal written amendments that we can actually have in front of us to look at and vote on. Does that track?
I'll take it.
Because I, I don't want to just have, I, I, I really like to avoid having amendments that are just orally spoken. It's nice to be able to read those first and it's specifically, specifically where the document is detailed is this.
Yeah.
And if we're having more than one, I think that, that's a valid request.
Okay. Um, a couple of things I'm going to throw out. Fourth of July is coming up. How that impacts this body and this group is we will be putting out an agenda next Wednesday and our packet next Wednesday. So, the turnaround time on that to, to have stuff that's included in the packet for discussion will be next Wednesday, which means I would love to have standing committee agendas by Monday.
Next Monday.
By next Monday.
The 30th.
I know it seems like a quick turnaround, but it only because it is. Um, so, just to keep it official, there is a motion to table for two weeks paid by councilmember Rude and seconded from councilmember Daniels. Let's have discussion on whether that's necessary or how we're going to utilize that time between that. So, I will take discussion at the table.
Shall we vote for a second?
No, well, no, this is, no, we, no, we've discussed and then we vote. This is just on, this is the motion, this is the motion to table is what we're discussing right now.
Notice.
I did, I made the motion because I didn't hear enough that, that needs to go back to committee. I think these are things that we can fix and work, um.
But, but not in the course of a meeting.
Yep.
And fine tune.
Not unless you want to stay here an extra hour.
Or two.
So, that's why I.
I didn't, I didn't hear that much.
Well, if, if we could go through and, and per, uh, per Chelsea's point, um, you know, uh, we could amend the things that we, we think need to be changed, but it would be kind of, uh, a cluster and it would probably take longer than we want to spend on it tonight. And if we actually go back and, um, take a closer look individually, come up with what we want our amendments to look like, have them written down, then at our next meeting, it'll be quickly, quick and.
So, right now I'm entertaining discussion at the table. When we're done, I am going to reach out to our planning board chair and I'll also reach out to Greg to see if there's any comments or suggestions. But any comments on the motion to table for two weeks for those to come in? And I've clarified the expectation that those changes will be done in writing.
Monday.
And by, yeah, so that we can include them. And that doesn't mean that they can't change and tweak, but we'd like to have a summary of those that we can include in the packet. Discussion at the table? All right. Um, Al, if you'd like to stand and speak for a moment, um, you have the floor, sir?
First, I want to thank, uh, councilmember Jody for, for comments and her thoroughness. Appreciate you taking the time to go through the document. Welcome to our world. The comments that were made to me are easily fixable.
Yeah.
Um, the foundation comment is, is, was an error that we made in understanding exactly what they did. To me, that's easily fixable and the council can do that. Um, on some of the comments on objectives, um, there was great debate on the ones that you mentioned. And there was, um, a split support on the, on the planning board about dark skies initiatives and so forth. I'm, I think your suggestions are acceptable and I think they should go through very quickly. Um, and so, you have our planning board support obviously to do what you need to do. My sense is that you can do this very quickly and that you went through a 90-page document and I only counted two or three things you identified so far.
Yes.
So, with that, I'm pretty pleased with this, so. And the other thing, when we put our objectives in, one of our discussion points was affordability and how we're going to finance it. And we decided we're not going to worry about that. This is, this is the dream. And so, affordability wasn't an issue. The one issue that you did mention about, um, the council that already ruled on the, um, was it the?
I, I, I have life in, in recycling.
It was a solid waste or not recycling.
I'm not sure we considered that that was an issue that was against council, um, ruling because it wasn't brought up. So, maybe we can revisit it or you can strike it, whatever you decide.
We can see what council comes up. Any, any other questions for Al while we have him? Thank you, Al.
Greg?
Greg, do you have, um, any guidance or input on how you would like to see those comments or suggestions, um, or just in general on the growth policy?
Uh, no, I think, I think it was pretty well covered by Al and the, the council. Um, I think the one thing to keep in mind is that it's, it's a guiding document, not regulations. And as Al said, it should be, you know, the dream document and stuff will figure itself out down the road. Um, so just, that'd be the one, one piece of advice for any edits or comments is.
And, and I would call out that as you look at those action items, so I'll, I'll take the dark skies thing, that it says the responsibility, um, is city council, planning board and zoning commission. However, having said that, I do think it's perfectly within council's purview. If you say, that's not an aspiration of this council, we don't want that in there, that is certainly within your purview to do so. So, all right. Um, any further discussion before we vote on the motion to table? Hearing none at the table, can I get a roll call? This again is a motion to table and bring this back in two weeks, which will be July 9?
Eight.
July 8. So, we'll still get it done before our planning board meets again because they're taking the week off, so we won't be in trouble.
So, I just point of clarification.
Yes.
So, you actually want our motion in writing so they can be in the packet?
What I'm saying is we will come with them in writing per, per conversation at the table.
Yes.
If those suggestions can be done before Wednesday that we can include them in the packet, that would be preferred. That does not mean you can't bring them and, and have it printed out and distributed to everybody in advance. But what we're saying is rather than saying, I, I have an issue, um, that it says we will support dark skies and pass regulations and everything according to that, what I expect and anticipate is that you will come with something that says, I move that we amend page 15 as thus.
To read.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify.
Did, did I succeed at answering the question? Did I understand the question properly?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, could I get a copy of those suggestions?
Yes, I will, I will. I'm not hearing anything because I'm taking comments from the table, but I have, in my idea, I'm going to make sure that those ideas get poured on to, to the president of the planning board and also to W W C in advance. All right. Are we really done with discussion at the table? May I get a vote on the motion to table?
Conley?
Yeah.
Daniel?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Ronnie?
Yes.
Rude?
Yes.
Tupin?
Yes.
Motion to table passes, six oh, uh, six oh, motion to table passes. All right. I will, thank you very much. Um, and, and thank you to, to Al and, and Greg. Um, if that was the things you were here for, you are welcome to leave. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Al.
I will entertain a motion for resolution 3702.
I move to approve resolution 3702, a resolution of the city council of the city of Red Lodge adopting the capital improvements plan for fiscal years 2025 through 2029.
A second.
A motion from councilmember Conley, a second from councilmember Ronnie. Before we go to a public hearing, uh, I've asked our public works director, Mike Maples, if he would do a, uh, a, a, a quick, uh, presentation of that. And while he's doing that, I'm actually going to do a share screen so that he can speak to that. Um, this is, uh, again, going from the front page into, under news, there's an option and so this is available to the public to look at. And, uh, go ahead, Mike. You are not talking.
So, we started working on this, um, last two months. Um, public works and, and Greg Weston hearings have worked on the capital improvements plan along with all the other department heads. Um, and I, I know from being in committee meetings that most of you have had meetings with me and went over all this, you know, what it is. Those give a brief overview. Um, the capital improvements plan is a, is a five-year plan in Red Lodge. Our last one was in 2019. Basically, it's a roadmap, uh, planning, prioritizing, uh, figuring out financing for major capital expenses like water, sewer, roads, buildings, equipment. Um, the key aspects of the, of what's in the plan is that it prioritizes what we want to do, what tells us what's the most important. Uh, it gives us an insight into financial planning, um, insight into scheduling, coordination, and it provides some transparency with the public of where we're going and why. Um, in the course of this, um, Greg Weston works with myself, police department, library, building and admin, and a little bit with fire department, um, because they're kind of outside of it a little bit. Um, we have a lot of our public outreach and engagement while building the plan was through our committee meetings. Um, and then I think it's been available online in draft for, for months. So, um, the CIP plan, CIP includes a lot of projects. In order to kind of figure out which ones were more priority than others, uh, Greg Weston used a, what do you call it, a, a matrix, a ranking matrix. Um, basically the components that went into that matrix were public health and safety, cost, grants availability, and a ranking from the department heads. I've got, if you just go to the end, um.
Is it page number?
Yeah.
Forty-five?
Forty-nine.
Oh, I'm only on 20. Let me go down.
Oh, I see it. Thirty-six.
Go down to the very end of the priorities.
Thirty-six.
Right, exactly. Back up. So, basically, this was the overall ranking of all the projects, correct? Um, so, when we went through this, we went through by department and by, like water, sewer, parks, library. Um, this is all of them together scored. So, the number one scoring thing, the score 95 is Stormwater. And, um, I'm going to scroll down. I can't remember how many projects were in there.
A few.
There's a lot of projects and this is, you know.
Sixty-three.
Just because they're in the capital improvement plan does not mean we're going to necessarily do them.
And, and also if it's thought on the capital improvement plan, it doesn't mean we can't do them.
Exactly. And, um, and some of these things are carryovers from past plans. So, just because they're on there doesn't mean what we're going to, you know, that we're going, that we'll actually get to. Um, with that, um, I guess, have discussion.
What I'll have you do is you sit down and we'll go to public comment and then, um, after that, we will come back to the table as we did on the last issue. All right. So, uh, with that, um, I will open up the public hearing. This is specific to the capital improvements plan. And again, if you would address your comments toward me, I would appreciate it. We'll start in the chamber. Seeing no one move toward the podium, um, let me do a stop share so I can see activity online. Um, if you're in alignment would like to speak regarding the capital improvements plan, if you could turn on your camera, raise a hand or come off mute. Jeff, I see that you are not on mute. Is that, uh, would you like to speak? Or am I just not seeing it because it's down below the screen? I'm sorry, that was Jeff Di Benedetto. And.
No, I don't. I, I missed, I, I clicked that mistakenly.
I thought you were just checking to make sure I'd noticed, so thank you. All right. Going once for public comment online regarding capital improvements plan, twice, three times, we'll check that box that we have had a public hearing and discussion on the capital improvements plan. With that, I will bring it back to the table. Um, questions at the table? Again, if you'd address your comments to me, please. Looking for hands?
I, I think it was very well done and I understand that there's been projects that, that, that we've always wanted to do that come forward. Um, and that's fine.
Anyone else? Any questions for, um, Mike? And we also have Greg Weston here if, if needed as well. Councilmember Tupin, thank you for the hands.
Uh, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm looking through, do we have dump trailer for snow removal in the wintertime on this improvement plan? A dump trailer for snow removal in the wintertime on this improvement plan?
No, but we, we have the dump truck in our budget for this year.
That's right. That, I knew that. It's like I knew this was somewhere.
And, and a lot of those things we tried to move over and get to it. I would say of all of our guiding documents, this is probably the least restrictive. The probably the biggest thing by not having something on our capital improvements plan is if it buys an opportunity to go for external funding, which in, you know, in a city our size is, is huge, so.
I think it looks great.
Any additional comments at the table or questions for Mike? Hearing none, let's go ahead and take a vote and move things forward.
Conley?
Yes.
Daniel?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Ronnie?
Yes.
Rude?
Yes.
Tupin?
Yes.
Six zero, the motion passes. Thank you. I will entertain a motion for ordinance 835.
I move to approve ordinance number 835 amended, an amendment to ordinance number 835 rules and regulations governing water and waste service for the city of Red Lodge, Montana, removing section 10-10-24, 10-10-25, and updating section 10-7-11 dot A dot three of the city code.
I have a motion from councilmember Ronnie, a second from councilmember Conley.
No.
Oh, it was, was it Daniel? Sorry. Outside voices.
We need to get like little lights that we can have on those things to see it.
All right. All right. A motion from councilmember Ronnie, a second from councilmember Daniels. Um, discussion at the table before we go to public hearing as this is an ordinance and this is the second reading. I will be happy to summarize it for the public. So, in the past, and this relates to the conver, a comment we heard earlier, um, several years ago, um, there were a couple of changes that were made regarding water and sewer. One of them was to establish minimums. Um, another one is how do you charge for sewer? It's really easy to charge for water because we put a water meter on and we measure how much water goes into the house. The good news is we don't put a meter on to measure how much comes out through the toilets and the, and the drainage. What that means is if they've set a sewer rate, they have basically matched the water rate. However much water came in through the city services is how much sewer you paid. That was a little bit problematic because anybody who was irrigating from their lawns However much water came in through the city services is how much sewer you paid. That was a little bit problematic because anybody who was irrigating from their lawns was basically paying not only those water rates, but they were also paying sewer rates in fairness for a service that we were not providing as a city. Many years ago, when they wanted to address that, they addressed it by allowing an option to install a second meter called an irrigation meter or a sprinkling meter that measures the water that left your internal plumbing system and went out to your lawn. And then they subtracted that from the sewer. So you didn't pay for sewer that you did for watering your lawn. That has been problematic for a couple of different reasons. One, it required an investment from city residents to spend money on that additional meter. That was further complicated by, there was an awful lot of time, particularly around COVID, where additional meters were not available. What staff came up with and has proposed and has been through council once and after, assuming that it passes a second reading tonight, it will go into effect in thirty days, is establishes a new procedure that we will look at the winter months for your water rate, and that average will be used to determine how much you pay for sewer throughout the summer, which means it's no longer necessary to meter that water separately to get that. So that will be a benefit, and you won't be paying basically water and sewer if you water your lawn. You will still be paying the water rates, but you won't be paying sewer rates on lawns that are there. There is one or two outlier situations where there is an extensive amount of water being used that they may actually see a little bit higher water rates because we do have an escalated water rate fee, meaning, you know, a hundred thousand gallons gets charged at a different than the first, I want to say thirty thou, three thousand gallons. There's an escalated fee that it goes up if you water more. And we reviewed all of those in the city, and there was only one or two of those that were impacted by that. But did anybody feel like I didn't, did I capture that correctly or did I tweak that at all?
I think that you did okay.
All right. I noticed we have the press online, so hopefully that was a summary that will be useful as we try to relay this information on, to the public. With that, because this is an ordinance, we will have a public hearing. Again, this is specific to the change regarding how to calculate and subtract sewer from your utility rate. So this is separate from the water and sewer rate increase, which will be up next. But with that, I will go ahead and open public discussion specifically for ordinance number eight-three-five. And I will go to the room, to anybody who'd like to speak in the room. Seeing none, I will go to online. Going once, twice, three times, I'll close public hearing and bring it back to the table. Any further discussion at the table? All right, hearing none. Can I get a roll call vote, please?
Conley?
Yes.
Daniel?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Ronnie?
Yes.
Rude?
Yes.
Tupin?
Yes.
Six-o, the motion passes. Thank you. I think that goes a long way to help provide the appropriate level of service to our customers. Thanks to Public Works and staff for identifying and working on that solution for us. I will entertain a motion for resolution three-seven-oh-seven.
I move to approve resolution number three-seven-oh-seven, a resolution to annually adjust the City of Red Lodge's water and sewer rates and charges and setting a date and time for a public hearing. Did I read the wrong one?
I have a motion from Councilmember Ronnie and a second from Councilmember Tupin. Discussion at the table before we go to public comment.
It doesn't seem like what, they sent out a second one.
Not the one in the packet?
There was two versions of the packet. There was one that was left out, so.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
You can read out the.
We had, we had, we had sent out the public notice, and then we got a comment from the public that said, hey, you said you were going to have this public hearing, you're going to have this discussion today.
It was somewhere, I didn't know that.
Lonnie, could I ask you to speak at this at a very high level in your outside voice? Are you comfortable doing that?
Um, sure.
I'm picking on you just because you've been here through the history. I can do it if you want, but they're sick of hearing from me.
Sure. So what this is doing is just to make sure that our water and sewer rates stay within like the target rate for any kind of farms that we may want to go out for, and they look at our water and sewer rates and make sure that we're going to hit those because target rates are set to make sure that we can pay back those bonds and stuff and make those payments. And just setting it like this, because when this was done five years ago.
Yeah, five years ago.
It was a huge hit for residents to have that huge jump. And then this just makes it easier not to swallow, I guess, when it's not a huge increase. And we just followed.
And actually, I think this process was started eight years ago because it was like a three-year of what I would call an elevated escalation rate.
Yeah, so I think that's what it was.
And then they set it five years ago to keep up so we don't get out.
So that's what this is doing. This is, one thing that is different in this one than the one that was done five years ago was that this can be reviewed. It says that at least every five years, but that doesn't mean that council can't look at it sooner to see if, you know, they need to be adjusted or if they don't need to continue to go up with the inflation rate and stuff. That was something that was.
And the one other thing, Mike, could I get you to speak? I know that you kind of, A, inflation, B, costs go up, and what we don't want to do is get behind. And we did have problems several years ago where when we went to apply for grants and loans and loan forgiveness and even financing, they said, you're not, you're charging fifteen cents for your hamburger, you should be charging an dollar. And so they came back and told us where those target rates are, and they have a range. And then our job from a city perspective is to make sure we capitalize that money and use that to get, as you know, we try to turn every dollar into two, three, four, or five. Mike, you've had a chance to look at where our rates are compared to where they should be. Your thoughts or comments on where we are on the table?
I want to refer that to Jeff because I.
I picked on you because you made the comment earlier that we were right in the middle, so I was just going to let you say it for the public.
I think we're in the middle of the target rate we're, what we're supposed to be for the water.
You guys are slightly above your target rate, but you're not, you know, some communities are a hundred and twenty-five percent, a hundred and fifty percent. And as a quick background, the target rate, the Department of Commerce, they do serve a statewide of rates to look at what communities are paying for water and sewer. And the DNRC updates it every year. In fact, it's out there, you can go look at what other communities pay. And it says each community is two-point-three percent of your MHI. They figures what water and sewer is, so the community is putting in their fair share. You guys are just over a hundred percent, like a hundred and five, a hundred and six off the top of my head, which is right in line. But there are communities pushing the hundred and fifty or higher that have had to do major treatment plans or things, so. It is with the cost of everything else. I mean, the cost of your staff and insurance and equipment, chemicals goes up every year. And where you guys try and match it to inflation just to keep up with those increases, I think is pretty wise. A lot of communities get in the same boat you were, where they wait for ten years and then have to do a huge increase. And so that's kind of where you're at compared to the target rate. I think you guys are in line, and if you look at the other communities, you're not out of whack. There are, you know, there are various by communities and MHI is for sure.
And I think it's fair to point out that the cost of providing some services to rural Red Lodge, for instance, is not the same cost as providing services and billings, whether it be water, sewer, trash, there's all sorts of things, but there are benefits of scale and geography that come into play.
Yeah, billings is a terrible example because they can spread it over a hundred thousand people instead of two thousand.
Twenty-three hundred. Give us our due.
Twenty-three hundred.
Well, and I would just like to say that the nice thing about this is it caps that increase for the next five years at three percent. So it will go up the rate of inflation, but if the inflation rate's seven percent, we're still only going to cap, we're capping it at three.
And if we suddenly get below that hundred percent, then it'll be necessary to come back to council and adjust it again. This is, this is a goal to kind of keep it going smoothly at what the market is doing.
And, and when you're looking at your utility bill, because that's what it is, it's not just a water and sewer bill, that whole whatever you're paying a month, I think mine's like one sixty-something a month or one seventy. That's not just water and sewer. That also includes your garbage now.
And recycling.
And recycling, so.
Yeah. And so trash used to be on taxes, so that's one of the reasons I know people, when we made that change last year, we worked to communicate it because utility bill on a monthly basis was going up, but there was in, there was a change in the taxes. So that trash no longer will, and we're now past that area where it was catching up because we were paying for it in arrears on solid waste, and we're now past.
Solid waste.
Or will be in a week.
So that time of neglect, benign neglect is over?
Yes.
Okay. And what does MHI mean?
Median household income.
Thank you. Thank you for asking.
All right. Any other, any other questions at the table for our staff that's on hand or questions, discussions before we go to public comment? Councilmember Conley, thank you for the hand.
I was trying to figure out for everybody in the room what kind of a raise we're looking at. Three percent, like my bill's one forty-four. I don't know what you're doing, but mine's a hundred and forty-four.
Just for water or the whole?
For water and sewer and recycling.
For my house, okay.
Oh, okay, okay. But my husband leaves the water on. Okay.
And I'm buying it on thirty-six.
Oh, this is much better.
Let's bring it back to discussion.
So it looks like the raise at three percent will be somewhere between three-fifty and four dollars a month. And that's what I was trying to go for is, is what kind of a raise are we talking about realistically for the people? Because I have had a lot of comments from people that are on social security or limited income, and we've already hit them up with recycling. And then it appears that we also hit them up with the big thing for the trash, so the bill just keeps going up and up. So even though they're going to get credit later on the trash, it's the perception. So I just needed to kind of get a number of what we're looking at. Four bucks a month?
What's the base water rate?
Well, I think in fairness, this addresses water and sewer, and it's fair to point out that our trash also goes up at about three percent a month, too. So that has a built-in escalation.
Or a year.
I'm sorry, three percent a year. Thank you. Thank you for that correction. I'll come to public comment in just a moment.
So that was, that was.
So I think it's fair to apply it to the whole utility bill. The only thing that doesn't increase is the recycling. So I think your three dollars per hundred is a fair, is a really easy math number.
Is a realistic number.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah. And it caps at three, so it could be less if inflation doesn't happen that year.
Right. So if your bill's a hundred dollars one year, it'll be a hundred and three the next year.
Any, any discussion at the table before I go to public comment? All right. With that, I'm going to go to public comment. This is specific to resolution three-seven-oh-seven. We'll go ahead and open for public comment. Please start your comment with your name, and you're welcome, and I'll start in the room.
Just have one more comment. I have a water bill here except for zero amount of water for a hundred and thirty-six dollars, and that does include the garbage and all that under. And so when you live out of town and you have a place in Red Lodge, and you get a hundred and thirty-six dollar bill, you don't even use the garbage, you don't use any water, and you get a bill for a hundred and thirty-six dollars, it's like, because I'm out of town and I don't live here, I'm getting charged more than the residents that live here. You see what I'm saying? As it should be more fair, fair by percentage on what you use, which is like anything else you buy. You know, if you buy a quantity of it, you're going to pay more for it. If you buy less of it, it's going to cost you less. And that's the way it should be with the water. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Any other comments from the room, from the chamber? Hearing none, I'll go to public comment online specific to resolution three-seven-oh-seven. Going once, twice, and three times, I'll bring, I'll quote the public comment and bring it back to the table. I will add just a public comment, again, we don't go to back and forth or discussion. There is a separate resolution or ordinance that was passed many, many years ago, actually just before I got on council, so six, seven years ago, seven, eight years ago. Wow. That, that, there is a minimum on those services. So the only thing I'd offer is that, and what it was is, it was so that that cost of water and sewer was not being distributed on just the people who were using it that month. The reality is those water pipes and the sewer pipes go by and need maintenance year round, and so that was part of the logic going into that, that minimum usage. But for those people looking to move into town, you won't necessarily see an increase over that because that doesn't start for nothing. That's up to three thousand gallons or five thousand gallons of that. So, so just for the public's clarification on that. Any other discussion back at the table? Councilmember Conley?
I would also point out that, you know, this gentleman has a house and he's stuck with the minimum. There are, everybody who has a vacant piece of land in Red Lodge pays half of that, and they don't have anything hooked up.
Comments to me, please.
Yes. So it, you know, is that fair, too? Yes, because it's available to them and the lines are getting older and, and, you know, everything needs maintenance. So not only the people that don't use their homes, but the people with vacant land are also paying what we feel is their.
That was, that was, that was part of that, that minimums ordinance that was passed several years ago as well.
Yeah. So, you know, it's.
Other, other comments at the table? Hearing none, can I get a vote on the resolution, please? Oh, wait.
I'm, in the title needs to be, just to take out the, and setting the date and time for a public hearing.
Oh, yes.
We just need to strike that out.
Okay. So can I move to amend resolution number thirty-seven-oh-seven for the title to strike out and setting a date and time for a public hearing?
I'll second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Daniels and a second from Councilmember Ronnie to amend the title. Comments on the motion to amend? Can I get a vote on the motion to amend?
Conley?
Yes.
Daniel?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Ronnie?
Yes.
Rude?
Yes.
Tupin?
Yes.
Motion to amend passes. Back to the main motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none, let's go for a vote on the main motion, please.
Conley?
Yes.
Daniel?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Ronnie?
Yes.
Rude?
Yes.
Tupin?
Yes.
Six-o, motion passes. I will entertain a motion for resolution three-seven-oh-six.
I move to approve resolution number three-seven-oh-six, resolution to award the wastewater improvement project for the City of Red Lodge.
A second. I have a motion from Councilmember Ronnie, a second from Councilmember Conley. Before we do discussion at the table, I'm going to turn to our Public Works Director. Will you give us just a short summary and recommendation, please?
Yeah, we, Craig West prepared the plans for everything. We did phase one and two, just in the event, we got the prices underbid. Had a budget of one point two-one-ish, I think. That's what we had budgeted. So one point two, so. And we broke, it's been two into four schedules so that we would have some flexibility in how we awarded. Phase one and two A came back at one point one-ish.
One point oh-eight.
Yeah. So that's within budget. If we want to do any more, if, if in the reserves or find some more, we have finds more money.
Or, or raise, or raise sewer rates, which we didn't want to do.
And so we're just sticking with what we have budgeted. And so we're recommending that you award the contract to COP.
Nope.
Vortex. Vortex. It was a weird bid, should I tell them about that? It was, we had three bids. Three bids, but basically it was the same three contractors.
Well, Western, I don't know.
No, Western, yeah, we don't know. But the first two bids were the same three companies working together. So COP had Vortex doing the lining, they were doing the digging, and Jim Swain was at PEC doing the manholes. And then Vortex bid was COP doing the bidding and Jim Swain.
So who is going to be the master and who is going to be the sub?
If we just did phase one, if we did all four.
One and two A, Vortex is low, if we award two B and two C, COP, so maybe that's a little bit, or.
Yeah, so.
So we get the same contractors.
Same guys. There, we've worked with COP in the past year in Red Lodge, so PEC worked here, or not, or Vortex.
So Vortex used to be.
PEC.
PEC, out of the, the storm engineering and contracting. PEC, out of how the petroleum engineering and contracting, Chris Peschon, they sold to Vortex, same guys, same crew. Don't think they've done any projects in Red Lodge, but we've done numerous projects.
I've done projects.
And you did one in Churro.
And any questions for Mike from the table?
Yeah, I have a question just about that, is that sneaky or brilliant, what they did?
I don't know.
Just.
They got, they got the bid, I don't know. They're, they're both good companies, so.
Okay.
I think we're, we're good, so we're recommending to award Phase one, two A.
Any other questions from the table for Mike or Great West?
Yeah, we have a comment.
I'll go ahead, Chad.
There's nothing underhanded or anything tricky that was done, it's just a math thing, an anomaly in the math. I'm sure that Vortex put out, hey, we're gonna bid it as a general, but we also, they put out a sub price, the Western, Cop, any of the other generals. And it just, the math worked out ironically.
Which, which one of them was better at strong arm being the other one to come in and sub it for them?
You know, yeah, some of them put more in move or they play little games where they put their money hoping to get the bid and the math just turned out really ironically, but there was nothing underhanded.
But, but it's good as it keeps their pencil sharp.
Yes, it does, so.
All right, um, any other discussion, um, councilmember Daniels, before we go to public comment?
Yeah, so I, sorry, I just have a question, see if I can clarify this, so you, you're saying that Vortex went with scenario number two for Phases one and two? And then I'm getting.
What, what they're saying is if you pick one and two A, you have one company that is the low bid. If you pick all of them, it's a different company that is then the low bid. So in other words, they were higher on the first couple but lower on the others. And that, so it's, it's like if they started out low and then went high? Or if they started out?
Well, I'm, I'm seeing two different numbers, is why I'm questioning.
For the resolution and then?
For the resolution and scenario two on what was provided.
Oh, do we have an edit that needs to be made?
Well, that's what I'm wondering.
If, will you, Chad, can you come look at, if you don't have a copy of it, can you come look at this just before, we'll go to public comment, but let's make sure the resolution is correct.
Basically.
Dyslexia happens.
The resolution said a hundred and fifty-six thousand, the, the bid is a million eighty-five thousand, et cetera. So we're wondering what that one hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars is.
Their, their bid is the eight six, I don't have my glasses in.
Here's some one-two fives if they help.
Scenario two is Phase one and two A. There, the Vortex bid is eight fifty-six, two seventeen eighty-five.
For construction.
Yes, that's just the construction. Also included in the scenario, but we didn't contract our engineering, construction time, RPR, because I don't know if I'm gonna have RPR out here for two months or four months, so it's tied down.
So, so do you, do you have an edit and do you sign, Chad, sign off on the edit, is that correct?
That is the amount that you would award to Vortex, correct.
Okay, all right, so with that discussion at the table, I'm gonna go to public comment regarding Resolution, let me put my glasses back on since I won't be lending them. Uh, Resolution three seven oh six, public comment in the chamber? Hearing none, let me go to online. Going once, twice. Hearing no public comment, we'll bring it back to the table. Um, any further discussion or possible motions to amend before we take action?
Yes. A motion to amend. Yes, I need to make a motion to Resolution number thirty-seven oh six to amend um, the, down near the bottom here, which says the city of Red Lodge does hereby approve awarding the bid to Vortex Services for Phase one and two A of the wastewater improvement project for a total cost of, and instead of reading the one hundred and fifty-six thousand, we're gonna read eight hundred and fifty-six thousand, two hundred and seventeen dollars and eighty-five cents. It is very.
Good catch.
That's why I was kind of.
Good, we hit only the hundred and fifty-six.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
My second's up.
I have a motion from councilmember Daniels, a second from member, councilmember Conley. Discussion at the table regarding the motion to amend.
Do we also, do we also need to amend the second or the third whereas?
Yeah.
Yep.
Can we do them both at the same time?
We, we can, if you'd like, if the motioner would like to amend your motion.
And to also include the amount in the third whereas of where we, Vortex Services was a little better for Phase one and two A with a total bid of a hundred and fifty-six thousand, let's change that to the eight hundred and fifty-six thousand, two hundred and seventeen dollars and eighty-five cents.
And let me look to the second, are you okay with that change?
I am.
All right, so the motion to amend now includes two changes to the number. Discussion at the table on the motion to amend. Hearing none, let's go ahead and get a roll call on the motion to amend.
Conley?
Yes.
Daniels?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Ronnie?
Yes.
Ruth?
Yes.
Tupin?
Yes.
All right, motion to amend, six oh, passes. Back, I, I'll just call out for the public, this has one of those little funny little marks on it, which is this is something that came to without going through a cycle. So normally we pick, catch it in the second half of the meeting and then it'd be good to go next time. All right, back to the main motion, any further discussion on the table before we do a vote? Hearing none, I'm gonna go ahead and call question on the main motion.
Conley?
Yes.
Daniels?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Ronnie?
Yes.
Ruth?
Yes.
Tupin?
Yes.
Six oh, the motion passes, thank you. I will entertain, we have lots to do on this agenda tonight, thank you all for your patience.
Busy agenda.
I will entertain a motion for Resolution three six nine seven.
I will make a motion for Resolution number three six nine seven, a resolution of the city council of the city of Red Lodge, Montana prohibiting, prohibited, or permitted use of Pride Park.
I have a motion from councilmember Tupin, a second from councilmember Daniels, councilmember Tupin, would you introduce that for us, please?
Yes, so we have gone from limiting to prohibiting uh, the use of Pride Park for events and permitted event, or permitted use. Uh, so specifically, we did rework this after our last meeting to really make this a respite park. Um, I had made a draft and sent it to the attorney. He had sent back a copy, which is the one that originally made it into the packet. Uh, we had some issues with the ones that made it into the packet, specifically the last three whereas's for what you see there um, were not at all actually why we intended to do it. So we felt that it was necessary to have those removed, I did provide an updated copy to all the council members at the table. If anyone in the room would like to read it, I'm welcome to have mine.
I just have to stack on the table because.
Perfect.
Because it was new.
Perfect, so specifically, um, we wanted to remove those whereas's because where this says it's an unreasonable burden or uh, it's gonna impede or obstruct with emergency services or it would prevent substantial and unwarranted traffic hazards. Like none of that is accurate for this particular resolution. I know where the attorney was coming from, specifically, he was taking reasons that a permit would be denied within ordinance nine sixty. And that's why those got added because he assumed that that's why we wanted to deny all of them and that's not necessarily the case. So regardless, that has been edited, we also edited the first whereas, uh, to be more specific, to ordinance nine sixty as amended. Um, to specifically tell out why, what the purpose is of that ordinance and why this actually fits with that. So, um, the other piece that there has been discussion on, and I bring this, like more unhappy to discuss with folks at the table. Um, city of Red Lodge recognizes the need for public spaces for lawful picketing and for public, for the public to express differing viewpoints. That was also in addition from the city attorney, I do feel that it's worth leaving in. And the only reasoning for that is because we did have such a public outreach, the people were concerned that was something that would be prohibited. So I think it's good that we do outline that within this resolution, that that is not at all the intention, so. Um, on that, do we need to amend the one in the packet or can we just vote on the one that's been presented?
What I would do is I'd say we'll amend as in the handout, but before we do that, let's have some discussion. I have, um, two things, the first is, given that therefore no event permits will be issued for Pride Park. Um, would the title be less confusing if it said a resolution of the city council of the city of Red Lodge prohibiting issuing of event permits for Pride Park? Because to me prohibiting permitted use sounds really, that's.
Aggressive.
That might have been where, that might have been where the confusion about.
Sure, no.
About that, that means, and then to me, if you do that, you no longer have to address it because one of the things that's an issue is if you look at what we have permitted use for, it's only if there's a gathering of more than seventy-five people. And that requires a permit, so if you're gonna have more than seventy-five people, you can't get a permit, you need to have that someplace else.
So with that, how does this sound for folks? Um, a resolution of the city council of the city of Red Lodge, Montana prohibiting issuance of event permits within Pride Park or for Pride Park?
For Pride Park.
Okay.
But it, they're not necessarily event permits?
Specifically, they are.
Because it's, it's exclusive use also, like if someone, you know, it's, it's not necessarily a public.
So, so just, can you just add that, issuance of exclusive use event permits?
Yeah, because in ordinance nine sixty, it doesn't call them event, they're, use, use of city-owned land, exclusive use of city-owned land permits is what they are.
I think it also is pretty detailed as event.
They, they are.
Cause I went, I mean.
But they're also, but they're also just, if you want, you can have an event in any of our parks, but if you want exclusive use or you want, um, it's over seventy-five people, you have to get a permit.
Or, or collecting money.
Or, or, yeah, selling something.
Ah, so it's not just, in fairness then, it's not just exclusive use. Correct.
It's an event permit because of dollars or an event permit because of any of those other things.
And I'm literally taking this specifically from ordinance nine sixty and where it does say, and I'll pull it, just.
I'm not voting, but she swayed me.
Okay, no, I get it, yeah, no, and I know, like if you're selling, you know, if you're setting up a pop-up and you're selling your produce or whatever, that, that becomes where you need.
Yep, if you have a bake sale, like that.
Yeah, bake sale, you need a permit.
Um, so hold real quick.
Unless you have an MOU.
Unless you have an MOU, correct.
The, the, the other thing that I would just call out, um, we have had people issuing or requesting event permits for Pride Park throughout the rest of the summer. Several applications have been processed, several events have actually happened. All of those who have requested them have been told there's a possibility that could change. And it is the intent of staff, what we'll do is we will refund those. However, you notice you put an effective date of July first, the reason that was selected is, um, there are events scheduled for this weekend specifically and we just thought it was unfair to yank the carpet out from underneath them two days before they're having the, the international.
It's the Festival of Nations tribute and there's specifically like bake sales, street dances, and so don't want them to feel like they have to all of a sudden relocate, so.
Okay.
And, and, and so if council's okay with that July first date, that was just put in there as a, it'll apply after that date.
Yep.
Okay. Um, so my only thing, um, that I just have about the whereas, the, the need for public spaces for lawful picketing and for public to express differing viewpoints. There are exceptions to having to apply for a permit and I don't think we need to put in, I personally, I just don't think we necessarily need to spell that out. And that, because then we have to spell out all the other ones that.
Council, council is welcome to make a motion to strike that.
And in all fairness, I, I've kind of the same appeal, like it doesn't have to be there. And the only reason I think that it could be here is because we did so specifically have so many people concerned about it.
Right.
And that to me is worth making that mention to where they're like, well, now I can't do this, it's like, no, we really like detail, but you still can. Like, I think it just makes it very clear.
And you're okay that, I mean, we don't need to put in there that, um, MOUs are exempt from this?
No, because that's really clear in nine sixty and we already had that conversation with the particular MOU holders, they are aware of that, so.
Okay, I'm okay with it, I just.
Yep, no, and again, this is just me telling you what, so, um.
All right, so I heard a lot of chat, do I have a formal motion to amend and what would be the form of that motion?
I have something.
Oh, wait, discussion before we get to the amendment.
I, I just think that this sounds a little negative and I wonder if the resolution of the city council, city of Red Lodge designating Pride Park as a respite park prohibiting the rest of, of the work.
Prohibiting you to have the event permit.
I just think, I think it's the, I'm so relieved this, this special little park, probably the oldest park in town, has got a special designation and I think it should be in the title, so, and then, uh, whatever you need.
What a convenient spot, we are at, we are at the spot where folks can make motions.
And I also wanna thank Kelsey and her committee for doing this, cause it's, they've done a great job and it's been a hard job and I just wanna thank you for the work you've done, so. But I would like respite park maybe to be in.
Would you like to make that a formal motion?
So I don't know what Chelsea wants to end it, I'll start it, you end it.
Oh, I like this, I got anymore, and then you can first and I can second, and you can second and I can first.
But I just, I, do you have a feel about that, I mean?
No, I think that's great.
Okay, all right, um, oh, I move, what am I gonna, what am I changing here?
Move to amend the title, do you want me to do it?
Yeah, you do it.
Okay. Okay, um, hold tight, I wanna write this down so I don't mess it up. Thank you for your patience. You guys can change me too, I don't care. A resolution of the city council of the, I, sorry, I motion to amend, I move to amend uh, the title of Resolution number thirty-six ninety-seven uh, to read a resolution of the city council of the city of Red Lodge, Montana to designate Pride Park as a respite park prohibiting the issuance of event permits. I think that's it.
I second.
Designate, I don't know. I'm not even gonna write anything.
I, I have a motion, do I have a second?
Yes.
I have, yes, um, I have a motion from councilmember Tupin and a yes from councilmember Ronnie.
She did second and I'll.
I did second.
Oh, okay, sorry.
I did.
And it's from councilmember Ronnie, discussion at the table, councilmember Conley.
I just have a couple corrections. Um, that very first line.
Wait, are these additional motions to amend?
Yes, I'd like to include those.
Okay.
Uh, whereas ordinance nine sixty as amended was enacted to establish, let's get rid of the word is. And the last whereas after viewpoint should be a period, not a semicolon and.
Thank you, sorry, that's bad edits today.
It's the over-editing that happens.
Yep.
Are, are, would you like to include those in your motion?
Yes.
Are you good including those in your second?
Yes.
Yeah.
All right, continued discussion on the motion to amend.
On, on just that motion or?
On just the motion to amend.
Okay, um, well, I don't know if this is the correct place, I just got to thinking about that last whereas more. I, by putting that in there, we're kind of saying that that park is designated for that?
I don't think so.
I mean, I just.
I think it is.
Cause I mean.
Okay, let's, 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 let's come to that as a, let's, let's do that as a second motion, let's keep the streak going.
Okay, that's what I meant, okay, yeah.
All right, discussion on the motion to amend as thus far, which is the title and two grammatical edits. Hearing none, can I get a vote on the motion to amend?
Conley?
Yes.
Daniels?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Ronnie?
Yes.
Ruth?
Yes.
Tupin?
Yes.
Six oh, motion to amend passes, I will entertain a motion to strike the last whereas, if anybody would like to make that motion.
I move to strike the last whereas.
I, I would second that motion.
I have a motion from councilmember Ronnie and a second from councilmember Conley. Discussion at the table on that motion.
I think it puts too much emphasis on just one thing because we also have musicians that set up there, that's not listed, let's not, let's list all the things that you can do in that park. And that's what that is and.
Yeah, I, again, end the name.
I, I just, like I say, I just feel.
And, and to be clear, it's, it's, it's a permitted thing, it's not requiring a permit.
Right.
No, anybody can still gather, but like you said, it's one of several events, councilmember Ruth.
I just go back to how much, uh, public comment you had on this and it eases a lot of people's mind and I'm gonna vote against it.
Yeah.
I mean, against the motion and.
Any, go ahead, any discuss, go ahead, councilmember Ronnie.
The reason why I.
You guys are gonna make me.
Oh, my God. Basically, I, I guess it just, to me, it makes it so that part, and maybe I'm, just that's my perception, but by putting that in there is like, yes, that's where a lot of that is held, but kinda makes it so that, that, that's like the designated park for it. And I know that, that, and I don't really necessarily want that to be that way because you can go to Lions Park and do the same thing. I mean, of which, if you have a whole bunch of people, you can go to Lions Park or you can go to Finn Park if you wanna go, you know.
All by yourself.
Yeah, I don't know, so that's why I just don't like it in there.
Discussion at the table for motion to amend, going around, all right. This is a vote on the motion to amend, striking the final whereas, can I get a roll call, please?
Conley?
Yes.
Daniels?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Ronnie?
Yes.
Ruth?
No.
Tupin? Tupin?
Same, I don't-
We just keep changing her.
Four, one, and zero, the motion to amend passes. Now, let's go back to discussion of the main motion, and somebody remind me that we're gonna go to public comment before we vote on it. Okay, any further discussion at the table before we go to public comment?
The only thing, now we have to, we have to move up to the fourth whereas, a period after that.
That's just a, we don't have to, we don't have to vote on that.
All right, I'm going to go ahead and open up for public discussion on Resolution three-six-nine-seven, Designating, uh, Pride Park As A Respite Park. We'll open up public comment. I'm looking to the room. Not looking at anybody in particular in the room. Okay, going to online? Going once? Going twice? Going three times? Let's bring this back to the table, last call for discussion. Can I get a roll call vote, please?
Conley?
Yes.
Daniel?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Ronnie?
Yes.
Ruth?
Yes.
Tupin?
No.
Five, one, the motion passes. I'm all right with that.
Oh, my gosh. Quit her, you know, she's like-
I will entertain a motion for thirty-seven oh five.
I move to approve Resolution number thirty-seven oh five, a resolution to grant approval for a property acquisition located, located near White Avenue and Twenty-third Street in Red Lodge, Montana.
I would second that.
I have a motion from Councilmember Ronnie, a second from Councilmember Conley. Let me take this moment to introduce this. This is the, the Sixteenish Bypass Project, which we got into it, and we discovered that there was a long-time road and several utilities on a piece of land that did not have an established easement on it. And so as we looked at how to move forward with that, um, it was determined that an acquisition was the best path forward. The good news is, is that we do have the ability to include this in the project costs, which cuts the cost to the taxpayers in half. Uh, but we were able to reach an agreement, uh, with the landowner, um, who had signed an issue and issued this. And I'm just looking for council's permission to sign it, because it's spending taxpayer dollars. Any discussion at the table? All right, um, before, hearing no discussion at the table, um, what I'm gonna do is go ahead and open this up for public comment, if anybody would like. Looking at the room. Seeing no motion in the room, I'll look to online. Seeing no cameras, mics, or hand raises. Going once? Twice, three times? Close the public comments on that action, I'll bring it back, and we'll bring it back to the table. And again, I'd just like to say that, um, it is my belief, uh, very easily backed up by math, that we are coming out money ahead by being able to move forward with this project, as opposed to having it postponed, um, and deal with inflation and all the other things we've talked about. So hearing no other discussion at the table, can I get a roll call vote, please? Oh, pardon?
Public caring.
Oh, did I, no, I did that, and nobody spoke. That's right, no, I, I will, I will, I'm, I'm, I'm good with that, but I did. All right, are we good? Let's get a roll call vote.
Conley?
Yes.
Daniel?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Ronnie?
Yes.
Ruth?
Yes.
Tupin?
Yes.
Let the record show that if you are ever writing as the passenger in my car and you point out a stop sign, the answer will be thank you. I, 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 I don't want to stifle input and somebody catching me if I'm doing something wrong. All right, I will entertain a motion for Resolution three-seven oh three.
I would, uh, move to approve Resolution number thirty-seven oh three, A Resolution Of The City Of Red Lodge Approving An Exchange Of Real Property Located Near Airport Road Between The City Of Red Lodge And The Private Land Owner.
Have a motion from Councilmember Conley, a second from Councilmember Daniels. Discussion at the table.
I, I'll just say that, um, I was up there again today. We're losing half, we're getting cut in half what we have. I talked to Mike Maples, he's, that area is useful for gravel, is accessible, convenient, and so that's what I want to say, that, that.
Thank you.
I don't think it's a fair trade.
Other discussion at the table? Councilmember Conley?
I think that the reason why it is a fair trade is because what we would gain from that, having just a half acre in the middle of a large piece of land is a detriment to the City of Red Lodge. So I think clearing that up once and for all, um, I mean, that big pile of rubble that's there on the city-owned land, there's also an easement there as well that has to be honored. So I think the city's coming out ahead.
Other discussion at the table?
From my understanding, the location, it can't be really built on or utilized, correct? Like, it's got utilities and everything running underneath.
There's about half of the, there's about half of the property, um, that has, that there is an easement. And in fact, if somebody's got that wording in front, I want to make sure that our resolution does specifically call out that we're recording that easement.
Yes, Exhibit A has a utility easement that runs on and across the property, eliminating the use of the property. It's in the fourth whereas.
I would, I would, I would request that we consider amending yet so that-
Well, there's also another-
We added this as a therefore, if it's not there.
Yeah, because it says whereas, um, the city is reserving an easement along and across the parcel of land they are transferring to the citizens. But it's not in the therefore.
As a safety hoop, can we, can somebody think of some wording we could put in there that would say?
I motion to amend, um, Resolution number thirty-seven oh three to read, now there, after the first paragraph in the, now therefore it be resolved, the city property, uh, being, oh, sorry, let me mentally think about this for a second. The city property being exchanged has-
Has it, was it?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
The city property being exchanged has a utility easement that runs on and across the property, limiting the use of the property. Is that all you want to do?
No.
Then do it.
We want to say, actually necessary to effectuate said exchange and ensure easement is recorded?
Yes, or reserving an easement along and across the parcel of land.
Or that it's maintained, or?
Yeah, I mean, for construction, maintenance, installation, repair, city utilities as set forth, be properly recorded with the sale, or something like that.
Oh, you're copying it from the whereas, I like that.
Yeah, so just move it, move it down.
I mean, you can have it as both, but that, but have it be properly recorded.
Be recorded?
Yeah, be recorded at the time of sale.
Okay, you want to take a stab at what that motion looks like?
I already tried.
Okay, I move to amend, now therefore be it resolved after that paragraph. It reads, "The city is reserving an easement along and across the parcel of land they are transferring to the citizen for construction, maintenance, installation, and repair of city utilities as set forth in the attached certified appraisal, and that it be recorded at the time of transfer."
Perfect, good job.
Beautiful.
I have a motion. I have a motion, looking for a second?
Oh, I second.
Have a motion from Councilmember Conley, a second from Councilmember, I'm sorry, I have a motion from Councilmember Ronnie, a second from Councilmember Conley. Discussion on the motion to amend.
Um, if we didn't do this because we owned it and it was our own utility, would it have transferred to a new owner?
I, I think it's safer that we just make sure that it's recorded.
Curious.
It is on there, I just want to make sure we don't not record it.
Right, perfect, no, that's great.
Great catch.
Hearing no further discussion at the table, um, can I get a vote on the motion to amend?
Conley?
Yes.
Daniel?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Ronnie?
Yes.
Ruth?
No.
Tupin?
Yes.
Five, one, motion to amend passes. Back to the main motion, any discussion at the table before we go to public comment? Hearing none at the table, I'll go ahead and open public comment. This is specific to the land exchange.
As a citizen, regularly, um, in terms of the value, that easement goes right through the middle of the property. When they re-mapped the road, it moved the gravel from one side to the other and limited, you know, my access to that land. And when you came to me suggesting that I forfeit or, you know, do the exchange so you would have a coalesced piece of city property that wouldn't limit future development, and I think at that point you were talking about possibly workforce housing or something like that, vastly improve the ability to do that. That land is currently zone three C N, so I could put in, uh, storage units, medical offices, residential. And I've had offers on that land, being in real estate, to consider selling it. To me, to beautify that strip of land, that, you know, everything else, as you approach the south end of the fairgrounds, is just nicely graded and unobstructed, and then you have, I'm on the personal patrol every Saturday morning to collect used marital aids, ear cans, you know, you name it, there's asphalt dumping there from Aspen Basin.
I'm back on used marital aid.
I never come across that. No, used marital aid.
And garments. So, I would tell you, I think we're moving in a good direction here, thank you.
Any other public comment from the chamber? Any public comments online? All right. Hearing none, back to the table. Any further discussion at the table? Can I get a vote on the main motion, please?
Conley?
Yes.
Daniel?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Ronnie?
Yes.
Ruth?
No.
Tupin?
Yes.
Five, one, motion passes. Lastly, um, I would like the council to confirm, um, my reappointment of, and I'm sorry, I don't have the letter in front of me, that, that the name, oh, we didn't get it in the packet.
Yeah.
Oh, I was gonna send it out to everybody too, and I apologize. Give me just a moment. I'm sure this is one of those things I was gonna get caught up on. All right, Kurt Nell, who is currently on the library board and who has graciously accepted, he's been on since twenty-twenty, and will complete his first five-year term on June thirtieth, which is why we added this on at the last minute with that little star. Um, he would like to continue supporting the work of the library in this role, and would greatly appreciate being reappointed to my second term, which would run from July first, twenty-twenty-five through June thirtieth of twenty-thirty. Can I get a motion to-
I move to reappoint Kurt Nell to the Red Lodge Library Board.
Would you also support me in reappointing him?
Can I say that?
No, you said you wanted to reappoint him.
Well, I do.
Can I pass that into a support me?
I move that the mayor reappoints Kurt Nell to the library board for a second term.
I would second that.
I have a motion from Councilmember Ruth and a second from Councilmember Conley. Discussion at the table.
Sitting on the library board currently, he, yeah, he's a huge asset, um, and I'm glad that he's willing to do another term.
And this is one of those that I'm not gonna go to public comment to because it's just an administrative function. So with that, can I get a roll call vote?
Conley?
Yes.
Daniel?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Ronnie?
Yes.
Ruth? Yes.
Tupin? Yes.
Six, zero, motion passes. The last action item, wow, this is a new record for action item agendas. But the good news is, I anticipate next time this is gonna be really slow, because we really heavily stacked things up this time.
So says you.
I know, I keep saying that. We did get a, an appeal for a resort tax. I would like council to look at their, um, there's a possibility that we just do it at five-thirty in two weeks before our regular council meeting. I think we, I don't anticipate this will go long, and I think we could do that within that timeframe.
I would, I would move that that's an excellent time.
So, you, wait.
So that would be, uh, July eighth, at five-thirty?
Well, the readers will already be here.
And everybody else will be getting here in fifteen minutes, so.
Yeah, that's, so July eighth at five-thirty?
Did I hear, did I hear an official motion there?
I officially moved.
I second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Conley, a second from Councilmember Ronnie, to set the time for the resort tax appeal as July eighth at five-thirty in chambers. Discussion at the table? Can we get a roll call vote?
Conley?
Yes.
Daniel?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Ronnie?
Yes.
Ruth?
Yes.
Tupin?
Yes.
It is, it is worth, no, never mind, okay, six, zero, motion passes. All right, thank you for the patient residents. That is the longest action block we have ever had, but there was an awful lot of things that we made a halfway through the alphabet. What now, what we'll do with this last couple of minutes, and what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna limit this to about five or six minutes is just a quick summary. And in fact, is there, I'm just gonna do a quick pass-through of the chairs. If there's something that absolutely you think the council needs to be aware of, um, if you would, you could go ahead and mention that. But I think what I'd like to do is leave that time for public comment. So I'll start with public health and safety outlook to Council Chair Conley, for anything we need to know from this morning's standing committee meeting.
This morning, we had four residents from, uh, Hauser Avenue, particularly from Highway seventy-eight to Eighth Avenue, Eighth Street, concern about increased traffic, increased commercial vehicle traffic, speeders not stopping at Fifth Street. They had quite a few suggestions, which we gave to the mayor.
Okay, any questions for public health and safety? Discussion will resume on, uh, trash cans and bear prevention in two weeks. Admin and finance, uh, council, or committee chair Ronnie?
Um, budget, 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 that's all we're talking about. But apparently, um, let's just go down to A and B and talk about those. We probably, we were talking about possibly taking off the ballot initiative, um, but we decided in committee that we are not going to do that, so just strike that. If we need to bring it up later, at a later date, we will, um-
And I'll just add a little bit to that. The, the, um-
We're all running out of words.
The election officer, um, had reached out and saying that we didn't need to have one because of who had signed up for office. However, there are still a couple of eventualities that could end up eliminating the need to have a question about whether we want to go to ballot and basically spend that four thousand dollars just for the marijuana initiative. And basically, in August, it'll be August before we know that, and so I jumped the gun by putting that on the agenda so we revisit it in August.
Well, I was trying to make it quick, but, thank you. And then, uh, a word to bid for the Rocky Mountain, Rockyford demolition, that will be up for, that resolution will be up for action next time. It was in, um, the public notice at the last, um, Thursday's paper, um, they put bids out for that. So hopefully, we will no longer hear that we have a building that needs to be torn down. It will be torn down, so, everything else is budget, that's what we've been talking about. Um, at our next meeting, um, we will have, um, a lot of our department heads here giving their presentations for, um, how they spent their money this year and what they hope to spend it on next year. So that'll be fun times, excitement, so, that's it.
All right, and I'll lend you some planning, Committee Chair Tupin?
Specifically, just wanna mention that, yes, the downtown master plan review is, uh, just following our next city council meeting. And please look at that now and get your comments in as we're having that public hearing versus a month after. That's, yeah, uh, take a look, it's a more fun one, it's more upbeat.
All right, and updates from Public Works, and to that I'll look to Committee Chair Ronnie.
Um, we pretty much talked about everything we talked about.
You're the one who made this very busy meeting for us.
Yes, so we did, we, yeah, unless you all have something else to add, I mean, I think we, we did everything.
All right, that, um, correspondence, uh, Councilmember Davis, you have something you want to share with council?
I just wanted to, um, let you guys know that I would be on vacation July twenty-first through the twenty-fifth, if that's allowed.
It's allowed, go ahead.
That's fine, four days.
Yeah, just that week, we were on the day pack, thank you.
Councilmember Ruth, you have some correspondence you want to share?
Well, I, it kind of goes with, uh, Public Works this afternoon, uh, I shared some pictures of, uh, Lions-